Good evening colleagues, welcome to the extraordinary meeting of the council to express our support and appreciation for the National Health Service and its staff, and recognise the vital role of the service on the 70th anniversary of its founding. Please be seated. I am required to inform you that this meeting has been recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services who will be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on with the next business? As previously stated, the only other item of business is to express our support and appreciation for the National Health Service. The National Health Service is turning 70 today. It is the perfect opportunity to celebrate the achievements of one of the nation's most loved institutions, to appreciate the vital role the service plays in our lives, and to recognise and thank the extraordinary NHS staff, the everyday heroes, who are there to guide, support, and care for us day in, day out. I will ask councillor Dixon to move the motion. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The second I may speak or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members who may each speak and may move amendments. Councillor Dixon.
Thank you Mr Mayor. We're all so proud of our NHS as being number of independents and wellbeing. I am proud of how the NHS has transformed their health and wellbeing of the nation and become the envy of everyone in the world. On July 5th, 1948, in 1971, the then Labour Minister of Health launched the National Health Service at Tork Hospital in Manchester. It was the climax of a huge and ambitious plan to bring good healthcare to everyone. For the first time, hospitals, doctors, nurses, pharmacists, opticians, and dentists were brought together under one and whole organisation to provide three high quality healthcare services for all. Now, in 2018, 70 years later, it is a time to reflect on this fantastic institution which we all appreciate but sometimes take for granted. The NHS is always there when we need it and at the most profound moments in our lives. At the birth of our children, at the death of our loved ones, and at every stage in between, every battle with hope, fear, generosity, longing, compassion. All the most profound elements of human spirit. In the North East, we are looking to have some of the happiest performing NHS services in the country. And today is the day to voice our appreciation for the skillful and passionate way services are delivered. None of this would be possible without the skill, dedication, and compassion of NHS staff, as well as the many volunteers, charities, and communities who support the service. The history of the NHS is one evolution of responding to the changes needed for the nation. Today's NHS is facing a challenge of a growing and aging population, which brings pressure on the services of greater than they have ever been. I would like to end Mr Mayor with a tribute to the personal dedication of the NHS staff. The success of our health service is very much down to the staff that work within them. We owe you a debt of gratitude and we thank you all. Mr Mayor, I would like to move that, in this special 70th birthday celebration, that tankhead council place concrete board its fans and support for the NHS and the dedicated staff to work tirelessly for the health and wellbeing of the public. We in stroke the council's chief executive, right German secretary for health and social care, Stephen Stevens, chief executive of NHS England, and Professor Sir Malcolm Grant, chair of NHS England Board, to communicate our message of thanks to the NHS on part with the 70th birthday celebrations. To ensure, sorry Mr Mayor, that we mean the firm our commitment to work with partners to ensure the residents of that tankhead continue to have access to high quality NHS services within the borough. And finally, Mr Mayor, working with our health colleagues important in that tankhead side, arrange for commemorative plaque or a commemorative tribute to be erected at a suitable location within the borough and for a celebration event to be arranged, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon, is the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Purvis, the motion is now moving to debate. Would you, you wish to speak first, sorry, my apologies.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, colleagues, I'm very pleased and privileged to speak in support of this motion which was so eloquently moved by councillor Dixon. When it was first discussed, I was very pleased that it had widespread support because it's something that absolutely no one can disagree with. Now, I'm not going to bombard you with statistics because I think we've all had enough of statistics. My head's absolutely caged with reading about how many people the NHS treats and the outcomes. What I'm going to do is do what we always do when celebrating the birthday of a loved one, I'm going to go back to a new ball. Now, I had an uncle who was a lifelong Labour Party member. Like most lads of his generation, he was whisked away at age of 19 to fight in World War II. He had a hell of a war, he was trapped behind enemy lines and ended up fighting with the Partisans in Crete for the rest of the war. He never spoke of his experiences, but when I joined the Labour Party, this is what he said to me. When he was waiting to be demolished, he and his comrades spoke about how they wanted a better world. They were absolutely determined that they weren't going to return to the conditions they'd left when they joined up. He'd seen his father die of a preventable disease, he'd seen six of his siblings pass away before they reached their 10th birthday. With his colleagues, his fellow soldiers, wherever they were from, they all had the same experience and they were all determined that there was going to be no return to it. They were the people who helped elect the Atlee Labour Government in 1945, and they were the people who in turn gave us the National Health Service. Now, it wasn't just the National Health Service that was born on 5/7/48, it had a twin, the National Insurance Scheme, protection from cradle to grave, from family allowance to retirement pension, security for ordinary people that they'd never known before. My 67-year-old grandmother was able to give up cleaning offices and draw a pension and be supported for the first time in her life. Now, if we want to know what could happen to the NHS, look what has happened to the National Insurance Scheme, a shadow and a travesty of what it started out as. We used to have insured pensions and entitlements, the Conservatives renamed them claimants and benefits and gave us social security. We heard scroungers and labour hours mentioned. See what they did there? The propaganda enabled then a hackaway at the protection afforded to workers. We all looked up and it had gone. Widows' benefits, death grants had all disappeared, and nobody knew they had gone until it came to try and claim them. A lesson to us all. Now, when my uncle was fighting, he knew who the enemy were. In peacetime, he knew who the enemy were, the Conservative government. May I almost say, the enemy isn't out there or in here or round about us, it's sitting in Westminster, it's wearing badges saying 70 years. I think it's to remind themselves that 70 years ago, they fought it against the introduction of the NHS. I just think they have sun nerve. So unless we stand up and defend the National Health Service, it'll go away like the National Insurance Scheme. So I'd say, this is something worth fighting for, it's something we've all got to go out and do our level best to defend so that it doesn't slip away and we don't return to those dark days when working people died for want of treatment and their children died for want of treatment. We have that responsibility to those men and women who fought for it to defend it.
Thank you councillor Purvis, the motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak, or move an amendment? Councillor Dean?
It is a true honour for me to be making my leading speech here from council, to be on this celebration of the 70th birthday of the NHS. As I'm not sure if many of you are aware of it, that I would not be here today if it wasn't for our brilliant NHS and its staff. As in 1992, I was involved in a serious road crap accident on the A18, just a few hundred yards from my home. I was going to hold Collycrane Station, going to work at all. This was a true life-threatening situation and certainly a life-changing situation for me, and I spent nearly a year in hospital. So you will all realise that I had first-hand experience on many aspects of the excellent NHS, from the paramedics that had attended me at the scene of my accident, the orthopedic consultant, Mrs Gundy, and all the staff and nurses who had to perform a 10-hour operation on my injuries, with what I was told at the time was a record at South Tyneside Hospital and may well still be, I'm not so sure. A list of some of my injuries included, an open fracture of the left femur bone, extensive soft tissue related to a deep gloving of my left leg from the knee, a fracture of the left ankle and the rupture of all tendons in the ankle, and a broken fracture of the right femur and fracture of the right nuchal and right tibia. Other lesser injuries include a broken wrist, rupture of the sooner, my fingers, and also a broken collarbone. With all my injuries to both legs, I finally were informed that I may lose both legs and had to sign a form, given their consent, that if need be, the legs could be amputated. A number of months later, I met one of the paramedics who attended me, to be told, told me that only when really could describe what my legs looked like at the scene was I had set up helicopter plates with bones sticking out from my legs. I certainly kept the metalwork industry going with all the metal in terms of external fixations in my legs. I was told that there was a strong possibility that I may never walk again, or at least be wheelchair bound. I was actually wheelchair bound for a number of years, but with sheer determination and again, thanks to the brilliant NHS staff, the physical therapy and hand therapy departments at South Tyneside Hospital, I'd been at least walk on my own with the air coaches. As if, a year is a very long time to spend in hospital, not all the time was at South Tyneside Hospital, but obviously with all my injuries, I'd have to go through, I'd have managed standing back operations at Shockey Bridge Hospital. Again, I had only total respect for all the doctors and nurses at that hospital and had to look at them, obviously seriously injured patients. I was especially touched how they looked after people, including many young children who suffered severe burns. I had nobody set back to my treatment, which resulted in my having to spend so much time in hospital. One reason was that when I had been allowed at home for a period of convalescence, I suffered never let it fit, and then falling the large metal bar round the length of my femur, which I was told would be there while I rounded my hip, fracture in it, and so the rod had to be removed. Some of you may be thinking that it must have been a terrible time being stuck in hospital for so long, but I can honestly say, enjoyed many aspects of being in there, and many people who I came to total respect the work they'd done and made many friends. I know a lot of you know my strong favourite son-in-law, who'd been a secretary-in charge of the support associations, but it was, in that year, in 1980, we brought in a support association. But my accident happened on a fortnight's January morning, I was on the centre reservation, the car skidded up control on that edge. Some of you were son-in-law supporters, may well remember what I mean when I say, I had 50 gold cards in my pocket for the Jarrow branch members for the FA Cup match in early round of the FA Cup, against Oxford. I came a bit of a celebrity in the staff, and that staff and patients would come to see me, it could have been that they wanted to see the players, not me, because a lot of the players who were coming had to treat and ask for coming visiting. My consultant agreed to let me out of hospital for the weekend to get to the book fair, allowing me to stay with one of my brothers who lived in the room, but obviously had to go straight back to hospital on Monday morning. The Jarrow supporters bunched up, a fun reason, I appeared for the flight stolen by myself and I killed that poor. I also came to be a bit of a celebrity for the day, in that this was after stock of Sky TV becoming involved in football, and a film crew came to the hospital to interview me before setting off, and came to the airport to see me getting on the plane. Another slightly NHS-related story involved my trigger wendy was that I was in a wheelchair right next to where the team substitutes were, I actually was right next to the Liverpool manager, Graeme Souness. It was not allowed on medical reasons to take his role as manager as he was convalescing himself after undergoing heart surgery, again carried out by your brilliant NHS. There's as many stories I could tell without being tiny hospital, I don't know, I make over your resume, I don't know. But there was one time, I phoned the big breakfast man Chris Evans and Cathy Rosman, the representatives, they had asked me to perform a talk about, tell me experiences near that encountered by being in hospital. I told them at the time I was getting wheel derved here, I'd had many operations. I was on corruption, which meant there was large overhead metal corruption bars, and when, on the other day, most of the board I was wheel derved, the corruption bar kicked an overhead cloth, it fell down and hit me on the head. I'm always quite sure, as a result of that, every overhead cloth in all the corridors in the South Tyneside Hospital had been taken down. The mainest problems are certainly technical issues, they really start this one. Now, just to bring a little bit of the other side of things, I probably want to thank you as a councillor this year, my dear old goddaughter, Leila, said to me, I'm really pleased that you've become a councillor, but what does that mean, you'll be doing? I told her, it means going to many meetings and trying to help as many people that I can, that one of my main aims is to try and save our hospital, as there is a chance that if, if you're related sisters, you're going to go hanging that he may have to take you to other hospitals further away, like in Sunwood and Newcastle. If our hospital's in there, it's close, then, Leila said, that is terrible, can I help you to save our hospital? And she, Helen, goes in past here, went and bought some pencils and glitter pens and done this sheet for me. To move things like, help Stephen Dean keep the hospital open. If you live in Jarrow and you're local hospitalers, some she knows, will know, we will have to move to Sunn and, oh no, we won't, and that, we don't want that to happen. We will do everything we must to save it, in a version that I've signed by Leila in Castle. Just a couple of things, I hope this does give you an insight on why I'm so passionate to save our NHS from being targeted, and why I particularly want to save South Tyneside Hospital, and being so active in the campaign to save our hospital. In the words of Iain Bevan, the NHS will last as long as there are folk left to fight for it, and letting Leila and Cassia are living proof that will be people willing to fight to save our NHS and not let it be sold off to this disloyal and cruelness in the private sector. It is all NHS, but people's NHS. Happy 70th birthday to you all.
Councillor Kergoer?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'm quite sure what I've thought about it, I'm trying. I'm fortunate to have been called to speak at this very special extraordinary oral council meeting to celebrate the 70th birthday of the service that is the National Health Service. As a very proud South Tyneside councillor, I'm incredibly proud that it was the party to which I belong who created the NHS dynasty in 1948. Of course, this was the edit by a lifelong champion of social justice, the son of Paul Minor, and then Minister of Health as we call him Paul Iain Bevan. This is indeed our proudest achievement providing universal healthcare for all and free at the point of use. In 1965, with Labour, the Family Doctors Charter was introduced promoting highest standards. The NHS service continued in awarding a pay rise of up to 40% to nurses and midwives. In 2002, a further four-hour waiting time target for A&E was introduced and set down. In 2007, free prescriptions were introduced for cancer patients, and latterly in 2012, the opening of the London Olympic Games in tribute to our NHS. In 1995, in 2001, South Tyneside Hospital medical staff gave the tour of my two daughters. Also in 2001, my mother had life-saving surgery at that very same hospital, and my gratitude to our NHS and to staff was on and on. I absolutely believe that the NHS is now the crisis, with our hospitals fighting for survival, suffering financial starvation. The brevity of this became clearly obvious to me when a closure of Jarros Hawken Centre was a casualty of under-resourcing. This was a tragedy and I would confess otherwise. Despite the unifying courageous defence of this valued service by so many of us here tonight, this significantly controversial decision was taken and on 1st October 2015 doors were closed. A trail of destruction has ensued. I absolutely acknowledge that, for either this money or rather the lack of investment in the very best service that could be made available to us. It is clear that our NHS service can't stand still or else we're going to lose it. Radical actions are being taken that are unsolicited massively regards to delivering services locally. The service's gainful support is not feasible without the dictation of the government of today, who's keen-minded to destroy this cornice rule. Mr Mayor, I would call you, Roger, Derek, comrades, and save South Tyneside us that will come here, and any other connectives who will instantly defend our NHS services, where our focus will be particularly local services for local people. But in conclusion, Mr Mayor, dear NHS, happy birthday. We demand that you get well, funded soon.
Thank you councillor Kergoer, councillor Edmerton.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, nothing inspires national pride like the National Health Service, it is a vital part of what it is to be British. 70 years ago today, for the very first time anywhere in the world, healthcare became free for all. A health service was created that was based on need and free at the point of use. As one commentator has said this week, it was the proudest social democratic moment of our history. Though a health service based on need and free at the point of use was important to the founder of the NHS, Iain Bevan, he always insisted that the NHS was something far greater. With the NHS there, for those in need, people could enjoy life in trouble or falling upon tragic times through ill health. In his book, In Place of Fear, Bevan stated, society becomes more wholesome, more serene, and spiritually healthier if it knows that its citizens have at the back of their consciousness the knowledge that not only themselves, but their fellows have access, when ill, to the best medical skill that can be provided. Bevan was born in Tragiga in South Wales, and it was the Tragiga Medical Aid Society that provided the inspiration of Bevan's model for the NHS. This provided healthcare to thousands of people locally funded by individual financial contributions. Because before the NHS, we were the NHS, with organisations such as the trade unions providing mutual assistance with healthcare in our archives. There are minutes from the Harton Miners Lodge dating back to the 1920s and the 1930s, quite clearly outlined in these minutes are the names of miners, wires, and widows who vast the Miners Lodge for help with medical costs such as bandages and doctor's fees. Of course, memories of life before the NHS are passing into history, but one can only have to read A.J. Conan's novel, The Citadel, to get an understanding of the hunger, filth, and early death that were factors in every day's people's lives. When life for many was short and brutal, when one's health was determined by one's wealth, because of course medical treatment was always available for the wealthy. So the creation of the NHS was the great civilising moment for the nation, it was about an assault on health inequalities in society. We all acknowledge that the NHS has changed beyond all recognition since its creation 70 years ago today. There's been tremendous advancement in medical science. We also acknowledge that healthcare needs are changing and that the success of the NHS has created new challenges. Improving people's health prolongs their lives, putting greater pressure on the NHS. That is why today, we place on record our thanks and support for the NHS and the dedicated staff who work tirelessly for the health and wellbeing of the public. Noting that the NHS has endured the longest period of austerity since its foundation. Historically, expenditure has risen by 4%, but rose by only just 0.84% in the last parliament. As councillor Dory Purvis has said, the Tories are the enemy. The Tories are responsible for the nine years, 10 years of austerity that we have suffered. The risk announced by the government, the real-term budget rise of 3.4% for the NHS until 2023-24, by as well done, will not be enough to transform problems in social care which provided by local councils. So what about the future of the NHS? The country needs to have a discussion about the future financing of the NHS for the 2020s and 2030s, but financing of the NHS cannot be done in isolation. Social care must be actively funded too. I feel that the structures of the NHS are too pansantine. The NHS, in my view, should be brought under local democratic control. However, I am confident that the Labour Party will continue to build on the legacy of Iain Bevan, a free universal health service, and ensure that we have an NHS fit for the 21st century. We are proud of the NHS, we are proud of the dedicated staff in the NHS. Working with cancer patients among NHS staff in the hospital, I witnessed first-hand the commitment and the compassion of NHS workers and staff. That is why, along with health partners, the 70th anniversary of the NHS should be remembered for austerity with a commemorative plaque or other commemorative tribute. We should also keep alive the spirit and determination of the 1945 Labour Government, but most of all, Mr Mayor, we should remember when Iain Bevan, whose deep commitment to social justice made the National Health Service a testament to social democracy, a reality in Britain. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Edmerton, councillor Pinkock.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Happy birthday National Health Service. There aren't many people left who still remember when there was no penny. There aren't many people left who still remember when there was no NHS. My parents were of that generation. That generation who had to think twice before calling out for a doctor. Not for many good reasons, but because they may not have been able to afford to, unthinkable now and all. We all have our stories about the NHS. This is mine. I'm the youngest of five siblings and the only one born under the auspices of the NHS. If I had been born at home, like my brothers and sisters, I would not be here. At the advice of the NHS, I was born in hospital and my life was saved. We take our National Health Service for granted at our peril. We must all make our voices heard to ensure that no more damage and no more privatisation is visited upon this our most precious institution, our NHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Peacock. Councillor McKee?
Thanks. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, comrades. Thank you, the members of the public and Save the South Tyneside Hospital campaign who've come here tonight to celebrate the 70 years of the NHS. It's a wonderful achievement and it must continue. There are many things I'd like to say, but just make a few points and comments, Mr Mayor. I agree with Dorian Purvis about the World War II. I think that was the focus and the catalyst for people who had suffered some horrendous injuries to say, no, we're not going to take anymore. Including civilians at home, you know, with the bombings from the look of. So that was a great thing. Let's remember one thing. It was a Labour government who looked after the needy, the poor, the vulnerable, the helpless in society. We're the party who will pick them up. Let's not forget that. That is our goal. It's our aim. It's what we've achieved with this particular service, the National Health Service. But we need to strengthen it, as colleagues have said. Now, I'm not going to attack the Tory person who's not here, but they are not representative of the party that I have to represent. I heard a man talking in a public house the other day saying that to join the Conservative Party, you have to first have a full front of lobotomy. Now, I'm not going to repeat that remark. It was something that was said by a third party. You know, one thing I can't understand, I can understand the Colombian national football team cheating and diving and things like this. But what I can't understand is when you turn on the news and you see Westminster and you see the Tory party getting up, they are worse than the Colombian national football team in Mexico. One of the things I'd like to see restored is nurses' purse series. I don't know why we have went down this route, that you must have a degree, you know. It was fine for many, many years to have the SRN, SEN qualification for nurses. I don't see why we have to have people spending exorbitant amounts of money when they don't have it to go into a profession which they want to go into because they have that vocation for it. And I'd like to see that reversed, that decision reversed. One of the other things I'd like to see is more medical schools and I know the leader of the council and others are trying to achieve that in our area, much against the resistance. There seems to be some sign of resistance. And the resistance is all about money. Before he alluded to privatisation, you know, you've got people like Branson running West Midlands NHS. He can't even run the East Coast Main Line. Hand it back. I'm not making any money, we're losing money. Hand it back. But they want the money out of the NHS. Talking about money, one of the things that I believe in, with, again, the Labour and the cooperative movement, is drugs. How much money is spent each year by the National Health Service on drugs? And yet we go to GlaxoSmithKline, Beecham, whatever to get these drugs. These are not silly people. They make billions and billions of pounds of profits. What do they do? They put the research out to universities. Can you research this? Can you research that? They end up cornering the market. That's got to stop. There's got to be central control, even if it's an arms-length management organisation. We should be controlling that drugs and the money that's made from those drugs can be refuelled and put back into the system with the National Health Service. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, outside bodies that will look to provide for what is our National Health Service. Nurses' purse series I've already mentioned. One of the things I'd like to say and pay tribute to is a thank you to all the staff, including, you know, phlebotomists, you know, radiologists, the porters who are often forgotten about. There's many, many people working even in the voluntary section in the NHS and they all are underpaid, undervalued, underfunded. I just can't have the word, I haven't got the words to express my disgust at the way they've been treated in the last several years by the Conservative government. I think it's an absolute disgrace. They've relied on their professionalism and their caring attitude and they have absolutely taken the nick. Absolutely. So thank you very much to all the staff, especially, seeing as we're a South Tyneside council, especially in the South Tyneside area where we are well-served, thank God, by many, many good professionals, caring people. So I know this is a bit difficult and it's not been rehearsed and you're probably going, oh, he's off again on one of his things. But can we just all stand a moment, please? Everybody just stand, please, just for one moment. It's good for exercise as well. Now, this may prove a bit difficult. Can you hold the hand of the person next to you? It's very, I know it's a very, right? Okay. After three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear NHS. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, NHS.
Thank you, Councillor McKee. Thank you, Councillor McKee. We will now close the debate. Councillor Ian Martin?
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think what he's going to get wrong, I think this afternoon has been an afternoon full of emotion. We've also had the passion and we've also had some excellent contributions from members from across the chamber. Some colleagues like councillor Ian and Peacock spoke from personal experience of the importance that the NHS has had in their lives. Some like councillor Ed Martin spoke of the need to be ever vigilant to defend the core principles of the NHS in the face of those who would sacrifice those principles on the altar of ideology. Some like councillor Kilgawa spoke of the restructuring that's occurred over the years and which clearly even now still causes some resentment. And some like councillor McKee just wanted us all to have a good sing song. But all of them spoke of the dedication of the staff in the NHS. No matter what their job is, who work tirelessly for the NHS and see their life's work as a vocation. The former Prime Minister Gordon Brown has recalled that on the 5th of July, 1948, in what was then the conservative city of Edinburgh, local notables heard a memorial service to mourn the passing and to commemorate the contribution of the voluntary charitable and private hospitals that were being nationalised. Meanwhile, fifty or so miles away in Labour Glasgow, university medical students unfurled a red flag on the roof of the city's main infirmary to celebrate the creation of the NHS. Clearly, Mr Mayor, the Glasgow students were on the right side of history. And I like to think that our ancestors here on South Tyneside were too. The Ingham Infirmary predated the even this town hall, built as an extension of the South Shields and Wester Dispensary by a public subscription in 1873 to commemorate Robert Ingham on his retirement as the town's first MP. It opened with 21 beds, but was enlarged in 1899 when the Redhead Ring was opened with 48 beds being added. A new operating theatre and nurses' home was built in 1905, five years before this town hall, and new wards and other departments were added right up to 1935. But the survival of the hospital system at the time depended upon public subscription and nurses leaving sick patients to take part in flag days to raise vital funds to keep the system going. It certainly wasn't free at the point of need. Labour's latest slide win in 1945 cheered all of that. The foundation of the NHS first established in Manchester paved the way for the many more men and women to continue to care for the people across this country and of course on South Tyneside from a thriving base, not only at Ingham Infirmary but principally at West Dorpe, right up to its closure in 1990. With the current site being formed following that, the relocation of the Ingham Infirmary and it's now located in Harton Lane. However, Mr Mayor, buildings do not make organisations, people do. The late Dr Anne Seymour, who joined the NHS in the 1950s, remains a much-loved and revered figure embodying the spirit of the NHS in South Tyneside. I note the Foundation Trust's vision to deliver nationally recognised, high-quality, cost-effective, sustainable healthcare for the people we serve with staff who are proud to recommend our services. So I would like to place on record my own personal gratitude to those who worked in the NHS, past and present, and to congratulate all staff on the work they do for the people of South Tyneside, day in, day out, despite the national pressures. It is fitting, in the 70th year of the NHS, that the council, the Foundation Trust and other partners should look to commission some appropriate public art which can be displayed in a suitable location as a testament to our admiration for the NHS and its staff. And I want to place also on record my thanks to Neil Mundie, the Chair of the Foundation Trust, Matthew Bonsey from the CCG, Gemma and Roger from the Save the Hospital campaign and other colleagues for joining us today. Colleagues who misunderstand the NHS for granted. It took a huge political courage to set the NHS up 70 years ago and it's going to take even more political courage to save it. It's worth reflecting, Tracy, that the Davy Hume Hospital in Manchester, when Ibevan launched the NHS in 1948, lost its accident and emergency unit in 2012. And despite some revisionist thinking from the right-wing press, the creation of the NHS was not achieved by some collective will of the political classes after the Second World War. William Beveridge, a liberal, who Winston Churchill described as a windbag and a dreamer, did write a report in 1942 which outlined a vision for a national health service, but it required the election of a Labour government pledged to implement. The Tory 1945 election manifesto, of which I've got a copy, made no commitment to create an NHS free at the point of need and they opposed its legislative path through the House of Commons on no less than 22 occasions. Let's not forget that as late as August 2009, leading Tories who are now in government put their names to a manifesto that criticised the NHS and called in effect for it to be dismantled. With a quote in their book, Direct Democracy, which I've also got a copy of, claiming the NHS was no longer relevant in the 21st century. And some of these people are now in government. And today we still battle a Conservative government which has presided over a funding crisis within our NHS, who failed to train the medical staff required. And colleagues, when our own hospital is required to recruit staff from the other side of the world, we know there is a crisis in our NHS. So in closing today's debate, I echo the sentiments expressed by all my colleagues and in so doing, reiterate my determination to ensure that the residents of this borough will continue to have access to good quality services provided by our NHS. That we will continue to meet the case for further investment together. We will also need to meet the case for social care, councillor Ed Martin says, who's also 70 years old this year. And I believe the fault line between an NHS free at the point of need and a social care system which is still mean-step and remains a fundamental source of inequality and unfairness today. Tackling the challenge of social care provision will require decisive political action and appropriate funding settlement. Because unless that happens, we'll continue to have a system whose inadequacies undermine the NHS and leave many people without the care they need. Nye Bevan may or may not have actually said, we don't know, the NHS will last as long as there's folk with the faith left to fight for it. But that's the political truth of it. And following today's meeting, Mr Mayor, I think we can safely say that we have a chamber full of folk prepared and determined to fight and to defend the founding principles of our NHS.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Councillor Dixon, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Yes, to be fair with you, Mr Mayor, I would also like to thank my colleagues for their contribution and support and most importantly, for their appreciation of our NHS services on this day and night, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Dixon. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The motion is agreed. That concludes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance. I would now like to invite you all to go to the reception room where we will continue to celebrate the NHS's 70th birthday with a cup of tea and a slice of cake. Thank you very much.